I'll call this special meeting of the Salem City Council for Wednesday, April fifth, two thousand twenty-three to order. If we're recorder, please call the roll.
Councilor Stapleton, here. Councilor Nishioke, here. Councilor Phillips, here. Councilor Gwen, here. Councilor Gonzalez, here. Councilor Hoy, here. Councilor Morde, here. Councilor Barney, here. Councilor.
Here. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, into this law of liberty and eternal.
Thank you. Councilor Stapleton, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I do. I move approval of the agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Stapleton, aye. Councilor Nishioke, aye. Councilor Phillips, aye. Councilor Gwen, aye. Councilor Gonzalez, aye. Councilor Hoy, aye. Councilor Morde, aye. Councilor Barney, aye. Councilor.
Aye, motion passes. Councilor Stapleton, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Thank you so much. So on to item two, discussion of revenue options, just the same city services. We will start, I'll just turn it over to the city manager and then pass it off to staff.
So, thank you so much for being here on a Wednesday evening to have this important conversation. We are rapidly approaching that time when we need issue our budget to you and the budget committee for your consideration. And we want to take this opportunity this evening to get some feedback before we finalize that document. We need to know where you stand in regards to our revenue proposals, both for the operating fee and also what your thoughts are about other revenue options, including a employee paid payroll tax. So, we're going to be presenting that information this evening, but we really hope that this is more of a conversation. We're in a workshop setting. We're all, no one is going to be making any presentations from the podium. We're all here at the table. We know that these are really challenging and hard questions that we have in front of us. And we understand that. And we, we, we're not even confident that we're going to be able to get all the way through this this evening. So, and that's okay. But we do need some feedback from you. We think that we have a well-reasoned proposal, but that's all, just, you know, we think. We don't know that, and that's why we have an elected body to, to provide us this feedback and input is, where are we going? How do we move forward? How do we address these important issues that we have in our community, like providing police and fire protection to our community, like maintaining our parks at a level that we would like to see them maintain? Like ensuring that our IT, our, our information technology is at a state where it needs to be and is supporting our operations sufficiently. So, those are the type of considerations that we're going to be discussing this evening. I wish there were easy answers here. I wish there was easy questions even, but there's not. We really are at a crossroads here where we've, we've reduced our staffing levels and we've worked smarter and harder and done all of those things. But I don't feel like as we looked at the budget in, in preparation for the twenty-four budget, there's no room there. And as you look out beyond twenty-four to twenty-five and twenty-six, we quickly drop into a situation that's unsustainable. And we're going to need to start that conversation this evening. We, you know, obviously we started it a couple of months ago, but we need to continue that conversation this evening, knowing that we're going to be in front of the budget committee soon, and that that's going to go by so quickly. And we're going to be adopting our budget by the end of, end of June. So, again, this evening, we're hoping for your feedback in your direction as we move to finalize our budget, and we'll be using this feedback as guidance for them. So, and there'll be lots more as we move forward here. But again, I, if a thought pops into your head, I want you to feel comfortable in, you know, having that, that conversation, raising your hand, and just having, we've got all the staff here that can answer your questions, and you've got each other to confer with. So, let's start in that vein.
Thank you. And Mr. Eggleston?
Thank you very much. Josh Eggleston, Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to share my screen for the
Josh, I'm going to ask you to, to really try to speak up.
We'll do.
So we can make sure that everybody in the room.
I will. I'll try to speak up. So first, you have two handouts for you this evening. The first single-page one, it's just some context around proposed payroll tax structure and some other considerations. You know, things set in stone that it does outline the legal authority, precedence, administrative effort, timeline, and then the cost administered. Some of this is built from the presentation as we walk through it, but that's what that one page is for. The other one is your presentation. Feel free to walk through. Again, like the city manager said, more of a conversation than a presentation. So feel free to stop me as we move forward. Some goals of the work session this evening. Get your feedback on that proposal and options to address the gap between the cost of service and the available revenues. Avoiding cuts to critical community services. Replace funding for some of the public safety services we aren't providing today. And then provide some funding for daily operations of new bond-funded facilities, and that's really focusing on that fire station. And then the second point is to answer key questions that you all raised at your work session a couple of months ago. I'm happy to walk through this. I think you all are familiar with why we're talking about revenue. They don't grow in city services aren't keeping up. The current revenues that we have are not tied to the economies. The economy increases and payroll taxes and most other revenues lag behind. One of the things about a payroll tax that we'll be talking about is it's a really different revenue source. So if you look at diversification, it's a different base, different structure, different taxpayers even. And then the cost of current services. So when we look at, you know, what, what does next year look like? What is that sustainability picture in the future? We're looking at the cost difference for the services next year, twenty twenty-five, being seventeen million from the revenues we're collecting currently. If you were not to implement any new revenues, that would be the deficit. And then, you know, the, the natural, the natural conclusion is in twenty twenty-five, at the current service level, we couldn't adopt the budget. There'd have to be changes.
So Josh, just to be clear, you're saying that if we were to continue with all the services we have going today, we would need seventeen million dollars more than the revenues that we have and that we're anticipating?
For the current city staffing and the general fund, yes.
In twenty twenty-five?
In twenty twenty-five.
So that counts like the homeless services?
It does not count the homeless services.
Not.
I do outline that later on. The all-in number, if you were to try to solve the deficit in the next five years, and the cost of homeless services is twenty-nine million.
Twenty-nine million. What is the primary driver of that seventeen million?
Really good question. It's really cost escalation. So, in the general fund, for most of these services, it's, it's services provided by people. The cost increase for people, and they're largely outside our control. We have five collective bargaining units. Christian could speak to this more directly, that negotiate wages. So we have very little control over that. Some other major drivers are PERS that's set by the state. Those rates are outside of our control. Health benefits, things like that. Some largest items go, they grow faster than our statutory limit of three percent of property taxes. It doesn't take much to get off of that, that pivot of that three percent.
Thank you.
Some of the questions you guys raised after your work session in February, what are the options available? Timeline, who will be impacted? Some equity concerns. How did we get there? And then what happens if we do nothing? These are, these are questions we're hoping to address this evening. And I'll turn it back over to Keith, just to say a few words about safe and secure, will be funding proposal.
So, as we were, as we were thinking about how we present this to you, clearly, two of the largest drivers of our budget are, are police and fire, and we recognize that those are significant needs in our community. So, we wanted to approach this proposal from that perspective of how do we supplement and sustain those ongoing operations that everybody expects from local government? And this proposal does that. We've identified two different tiers, if you will. One is funding existing services and the other is some new or enhanced services. And we think that that's important, both from the perspective of, of, we've got to cover our existing expenses, obviously, as we go forward. But we also recognize that there are some, some holes in the service that we deliver. For example, we have one park ranger for ninety-one parks covering over two thousand acres of parkland. It's simply impossible for that one person to cover all of that ground at one time. We found that over the last five years, our code enforcement function is now an integral part of homeless response and has eaten into the basics of code enforcement. So we're looking at proposing ways to close that gap. Some of the, the services that we have, the, the SOS team, for example, that's out on the street, responding to encampments and traction debris along Wright's Way in, in our parks and properties, is not funded beyond this coming year. So, we need to be talking about how do we continue those services or how do we withdraw from those services? Same with the navigation center and the tiny house villages that we need to either be thinking about how do we continue those services or how do we plan to exit those services? So, the proposal that's coming in front of you this evening will be looking at both existing services covering that gap and actually adding to some services. And we'll be talking more about the services that we'll be proposing to add as we get further into this. But it's really about building around our safe and secure community.
Yeah, thank you, Keith. And, you know, I think last work session, you wanted a scenario. This is a scenario proposal. Of course, it's one recipe, if you will, for revenue and services being added. It does solve the structural deficit between the two revenue sources and does add service.
Josh, before I launch in there, I just want to do a quick check in to see if there are any questions before we're up and jumped in and want to, the questions, all good? Hey, go for it.
So, two, two revenue sources, an increased city operations fee. If you're not familiar with the city operations fee, it's on your utility bill that you get from the public works department. Right now, it's eight dollars ninety-three cents. We'll talk about what increase we're looking at. The second one is an employee-paid payroll tax, including a self-employed component. Then as Keith mentioned, from the combination of existing and new services, and really focusing on that safe and secure community. The city operations fee, we're looking at the residential rate increase of five dollars and fifty cents. A multifamily unit increase of four dollars and forty cents. And then industrial, institutional, commercial, the other account types of twenty-six fifty-one. Those maintain the same ratios as we currently have. And if the direction we get from council is positive for this piece, it would be included in the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four. And you'd look for an effective July, where trying to keep it off-cycle from the January rate increases for the utility, just not to create that large bump of calls for the utility. We'd like to address it separately.
But in January, that would go up another like ninety-three cents, right? So,
Correct.
So this is a little deceptive, and then it's really six dollars and forty-three cents by January one of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and I don't remember the deceptive. I don't remember a slide that outlines the increase on July first and January first, and the message, messaging would be consistent. The, what the council is referring to is the current city operations fee escalates with inflation. So it's tied to the CPI for the West Region. And it increases in January. We look for that to continue for the increased amount for the city operations.
So, Josh, before we move past this, I thought that if I'm remembering the conversation correctly from our last work session, I thought that the questions that we asked you or the direction that we gave was to come back with more of the differential, a differential between our individual residential customers and those very large customers. And what I heard you say is this maintains that current system.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I do have a slide that addresses that equity piece. We have some system limitations right now that make it extremely challenging to differentiate commercial into different categories, or small, or large, medium, as such. So if you were to make the rate different, you'd be impacting all commercial customers. You know, yes, you capture the, the Walmart, the Costco's, the, the Fred Meyer's, but you also hit small coffee shops and other, other businesses that pay the utility rate. So I do have a slide that goes over that. And we do have a, a timeline to come back and address the equity concern. Thank you. The second piece is an employee-paid payroll tax, and it looks really complicated. But what we're, what we're displaying is option A, B, and C. And this was really in smarter conversations with councilors. I was starting with two, two options, and we added a third that was requested. And I'll go through what those means, but basically what each of those entails. But basically, a base component remains the same for each of those options, and then the sheltering service piece looks different for options A, B, and C. First, looking at the city operations fee, we're looking at five point one three million that would be generated by that increase. And the split here between existing services and new services, so we're, we're finding some existing services and add some new services with that increased city operations. The security service there at the top, the new service is funding in the general funds, until there's a more sustainable source for the downtown parking fund, funding twenty-four-seven arcade security in downtown, and then also funding security for the civic center complex. Currently, I have two security guards here at the library, but expanding that to two more security guards for the entire complex, not just the library. All right. No questions on that? The next two items is two new FT for code enforcement and two new FT for park rangers. So just really expanding those two programs. The next one is fund and expand SOS team. So, right now, it's funded with one-time revenues. This would switch it. So we have a sustainable revenue source. And then we'd also expand it to seven days a week. Currently, it's only funded at five days a week. So we add four FT.
Question. So about the security services, I have no doubts that this is needed. I hear about the downtown parking situation all the time. Both Councilor Nishioke and I are, are always getting emails about that, and it is a serious concern for folks. Can you, I don't know much about what's happening here on this campus, so maybe could you or somebody else kind of explain what the need is here? I don't doubt that it's there. I just haven't heard about it, so I don't know.
Yeah, really good question. I defer to either Keith or Christian.
Well, I can give it, give it a go first. So, like all our facilities, we have people come onto our campus who don't necessarily have good intentions. We have break-ins in our vehicles, much the same as we have down at the parking structures. So, a lot of the same activity and the same issues related to our parking structures also relate to the civic complex. Obviously, here at the library, security is an issue. Having the security officers on-site allows us to maintain normal operations and an environment that's conducive to the operations of the library. The same goes for the civic complex. Our employees have a enhanced feeling of security, knowing that they come and go to their vehicles with some level of, of protection. It's certainly not fail-safe, as is having security in the, the parking structures downtown is not fail-safe. They're on a roving basis and are covering the three shuttle structures, but we're not proposing to cover them twenty-four seven.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
The last item there is support services. So through both these revenue sources, we're, we're trying to maintain the ratio of support staff. So that's like in finance, IT, HR, legal, maintaining the same one to four ratio that we currently have. One thing that's challenging that's happened in the past is adding operational employees, but not having the, the backend support for them. So between these two proposals, it maintains that ratio.
I would like to ask a question back on the SOS team and the park rangers. So, the question I have is basically, the two new FTEs for park rangers, does that feel sufficient to manage the ninety-one parks?
No, absolutely not. But,
It's a start.
It's three times what we already have. So, it's going to feel like a dream come true for Mike, our park ranger, to have that support and to be able to have people that he can rely on, to be able to have somebody on patrol over the weekends, to be able to have the people that are connecting to the police force on a regular basis and are a resource for them also. So, that's our hope there. But no, is that adequate? Olympia, where, you know, I was assistant city manager, has five park rangers. Smaller community and many fewer parks in fewer park acreage, so.
And then, if I may, a follow-up question. This would be on the SOS team. The SOS team is doing a remarkable job. And so I'm wondering, again, if the new services that we're adding, is that going to be, again, sufficient to manage the schedules?
Basically, what this will allow us to do is maintain that, the service level that we have Monday through Friday, and carry that over to the weekend, so that we will have seven-day-a-week coverage. And obviously, there's going to be some overlap in there as well, so that during the week we'll have some enhanced capabilities. But again, is it going to allow us to eliminate all traction debris that we see along our streets and Wright's Way? Absolutely not. Is it going to allow us to reduce the problem significantly? Yes, of course. We're going to be able to be considerably more responsive. Trevor and his folks obviously work very closely with the SOS team. And having the additional police coverage that we're proposing and the SOS team will allow us to really get at the issues that we see and hear about on a regular basis.
Thank you.
The park ranger position, what do they do? Like, when in general, what, what is their role? You know, and where does it end? And what is maybe the need for a police officer? Start, a lot of the concerns I, that I hear from parks are, I won't say police level. I mean, that's what it seems like. I don't get it. I don't see a lot of dogs loose kind of complaints. We get those every once in a while, but I don't, but where does, I'm just trying to, it's never, it's never, and I know it's never enough, you know, but.
I didn't hear the whole question earlier.
So, the question was in regards to what is the role of park ranger? I know that the role of the park ranger is generally, again, we only have one here.
It's under the proxy conference. I heard correct.
It's actually coming out of code enforcement, if I understand correctly. So they're, they're aligned, our, our park rangers aligned with our code enforcement function, and they're primarily out in the parks responding to calls about, hey, there's tents being set up in this particular park. Can you come out and engage with these individuals and start the process of putting up the seventy-two-hour notice and starting the process of moving those individuals along, identifying areas where traction debris have accumulated and coordinating the cleanup? In the Fairmont Park, for example, very near where I live, there was a large encampment there, or it was, must have been there for a year or so or more. And over the course of the last three months, that's been cleaned up in SOS and the park ranger both were coordinating on that. So I think we'd see more of that, more proactive response to people setting up. And, you know, our parks are not made to be lived in. The parks are made to be experienced for recreation and resource purposes. They're not made to be lived in. So, the park rangers certainly would help us in managing those situations. But I know that there's much more that they're doing as well and can do in collaboration and conjunction with the police force.
Take to join that, or go?
Just that, yeah, typically under the code enforcement umbrella, so, but there are certain lower-level offenses, code violations that occur at parks that they're able to enforce. Anything escalates, of course, and they have kind of direct contact with the police department to call us in. So, they are just an expert set of eyes and ears presence in our parks, which is helpful to us as well. But they don't have full police officer power, of course.
So, when, I'm sorry. When you think about a non-law enforcement response, there are non-law enforcement returns. They're, they're not providing the level of social service like a crisis responder may, may be, but they're interjecting and interdicting in a situation that oftentimes is going to re, result in, in interactions with people experiencing homelessness.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to confirm. You said that would add four full-time employees to the SOS team. Did that right?
Yeah, that's correct. We're the, they explain.
Thank you.
Yeah, go to seventy.
I just wanted to, wanted to say for me, having more pub rangers, I think people, when they see pub rangers in our parks more often, they'll feel much more comfortable about going to our parks and being there. Just that presence, I think, is really crucial.
Yeah, there are another uniform presence.
I think about Yogi the Bear. My only concept. So many. What do you do? Josh?
As far as who will be impacted by the city operations fee, I, I do want to recognize that we are looking that it would go up again. So we're looking at a one-time adjustment July, and then an increase in January. And I'm looking at this slide, and I'm seeing that the dates are a year off. So it's actually seven, one, twenty-three, one, one, twenty-four, you know, for the adjustment dates. And then this, I, I think you've seen this table before, the residential accounts, storm, street water, only, multifamily units. This breakdown wasn't available last time. And then commercial, public, institutional accounts there, total of sixty-nine, three, twelve. It does fluctuate some. We get organic increases every year. Then we also have accounts that go away and come back. So, for example, the total proposed rate for seven, one, July first, for residential customers would be fourteen, forty-three. And then in January, we look for a CPI adjustment, fifteen, thirty-three. And that's just consistent with the rest of the rate, the eight ninety-three that's going to be increasing in January. This slide, talking with that, speaking to equity concerns, one piece we, we always like to highlight, or if these people don't know about it, we do offer our discounts to senior disabled and low-income customers. Currently, within the city limits, six hundred and twenty-five customers receive that discount. So that includes the city operations fee. So currently, they don't pay an eight ninety-three. And we're suggesting that going forward, they wouldn't pay the increase either. So that, that discount would increase correspondingly. The equity concerns as far as residential versus commercial, I'm going to talk about that. And then within commercial, or small versus large commercial, the current utility billing system, I forget how long it's been.
It's twenty-three years old.
Twenty-three years old. It's in the midst of being replaced. It's often referred to as fragile. And we really can't afford not to collect utility revenue on a monthly basis. We can't stop. It's often referred to as fragile. And we really can't afford not to collect utility revenue on a monthly basis. We can't stop billing. It's fairly limited in what we can do. Flexibility wise to add different data sets or different pieces into it. A new utility billing system is being implemented. We're looking for that to be live and stable by mid next year. Ideally, we'd like to come back and have that equity discussion, adjusting the rates at that time. So just to be clear, Josh, when you say next year, June, June twenty four, twenty four, yes, that's correct.
And just to add on to what Josh is saying, I have pushed Josh on this to the point of, I'm sure, being annoying. And he has encouraged me that now is not the time because of the software issues. It's virtually impossible for our software to accommodate changes in the billing format that would allow us to do this in a reasonable way. This is something that we can accomplish and we can plan for for twenty twenty five. And we can start that process right now. But for better or for worse, we need the revenues and we need them today. We don't need them a year from now. We need the revenues today. So we really can't wait until the software is in place and then, you know, get it perfect. We're never going to get it perfect. There always is going to be elements of inequity in a taxation system. But that's just the way it is. But we can make it better and we'll be able to do that over the course of the next year.
So Keith, is it okay if I just add a couple of things? So so the system is twenty three years old. But the current situation is challenging because we don't have support from the vendor. So we can't technically touch the system. We can make changes, but if something breaks, that means we can't do anything. So we are replacing the system with a with a newer system. So it should be up and running by mid mid next year. So.
It actually seems like we've been in the process of replacing this system for a long time. Is it? I mean, it feels like, but when we implemented, there would be, we were trying the same thing. And so it's confusing. We're still wiring. Over a year.
So, Alicia, maybe you can add a little bit to it. So we started working on the project like a few years ago. It does take, you know, some time to kind of basically to move every module of the system so that we don't break it. So that it has been a challenging process just because of the lack of support from the existing vendor, right? So Alicia, if you can add.
Sure. Alicia Blalock, a system hub and works director. And actually, the utility billing system, we went out for R F P last year. So we didn't actually start working on the replacement of it until a few months ago, really. We started, I think we went live in January with our contract and we've been working on it all year. So we hope to implement it within the year. But, you know, we're wanting to be thorough and careful about it. The other challenge is that data set piece. And so it's not just the system, it's that we need a data set on which to differentiate commercial.
What's the plan to have that?
I think we need to have some conversation with you all to see how we want to differentiate that. One option would be some kind of a registration for a business so that we could differentiate based on some information that we don't currently gather. Another option might be something that we could get through the tax records. We also have some remote sensing imagery kinds of things that we could look to. Again, nothing's perfect. We need to make pick the best option that you're comfortable with and then implement the tiers.
So I have a question. So are you, have you found the new software vendor and the software? And now you need to make these decisions on that, on this, the data that you're going to utilize to differentiate these businesses.
We are under contract with the vendor. We are implementing everything we can for water, wastewater, stormwater. The other modules that include things like backflow device and and those things that we need to build for street light fee, you know, we have all those data sets. What we don't have is a data set to differentiate businesses on the criteria that you all want to use. So we need to have some conversation to understand how you want to differentiate it. Is it going to be based on sales? Is it going to be based on floor area? Is it based on building size? Right? Yeah, we have to have a data set incorporated in the system and then build on it. Right? And so what you have in some of our buildings is just simply based on customer class. That's the easiest for us, one for one thing. When we did impervious area for stormwater, again, we have that data. We know the number of units for multifamily. That's what we use for sewer to help create those increments. But we need the data set that we all feel comfortable with, best represents what we need to use for operations fee.
And when when do you come to be bringing that forward to us?
Uh, that's something we'd actually look for your direction on. I don't know if it's something the full council wants to discuss, or we could bring it to the finance committee or a different smaller group to kind of work through what makes sense. We do have to be somewhat careful. I mean, it's a fee, it's not a tax. So we can't have it based on property value or anything that looks like property value. So that's one of the concerns we have with the current data for like impervious surface. When Keith was pushing me to find a solution, we did go down that road. Uh, there's just a lot of accounts, just really nuanced, really detailed question. Like if you look at a large mall, uh, there's a master account, the whole entire mall that has the impervious surface. Each individual business doesn't have the impervious surface because it's just, don't break it out of parking lot that way. So that's one of the challenges. We don't have a data set that we can just snap our fingers. The thoughtful process to figure out what makes sense, because what we want to do is make a change and create a different equity issue.
Oh, thank you. Two things. First of all, I like the concept of business registration for a variety of reasons. First of all, to make it simpler to identify and get the lay of the land. Having a better connection point with businesses in our city of all sizes means we have a communications pipeline that we don't currently have. And it could make things easier, not only for administering an operations fee for, but also the other revenue measure that we're looking at. It could be simpler for that. But also, I find when I talk to a lot of local businesses, they don't know the kind of resources that we have available to assist them. We're still getting the word out about the S O S team. We're still getting the word out about the grand opportunities that are available to businesses within the urban renewal areas. And there are workshops that we put on for people who want to start a business or grow a business. We had registration for these businesses. If with a push to a button, we can email these individuals and let them know how we can support businesses in our community. How can they contact us if they have a public safety concern? That might not be an emergency. It might not be a nine one one call, but it might be something else that they would like the city to work with them on. I think it is an opportunity for improved engagement with the businesses and also improved ease of administration for any kind of revenue measures that we pursue.
Councilwoman.
Um, thank you, actually. Both councillor Ishioka and councillor Norde, answered a lot of the questions I had. At the last meeting, I guess my question is, if we had a business registration, would it be able to capture the information to give us the flexibility to restructure the rates? Because at the last meeting, we talked about type of business, workforce size, square footage. We probably know what the size of the water review is, what was that one too? And I just wanted to make sure we'd be able to capture that information and that the new system could do that.
I think that that would depend on the methodology, but I think the simple answer is yes.
Okay.
We do already have the water meter size and looking through the data set. I'd be happy to walk through with any of you. Uh, it's not as clear cut, you know, you know, one inch applies to lots of different sizes and types of businesses. So it's not as clean as saying that you have a bigger water meter size or a bigger business. It doesn't quite work that way. As far as a different data set, yes, that could be a means to collect it.
I have another question. Have we looked at League of Orange Cities for recommendations for how to structure an operations fee? And has Moss Adams given us any insight based on all of the work that they've done for us? Do either of those resources have information that might help guide us or give us an outside opinion on how to structure an operations fee and particularly how it, whether we base it on square footage or other aspects of business?
Yeah, really good question. Moss Adams did take a look at that for us. They they don't do a formal report. Usually, it's implemented by account class. There's not really much nuance to it. Uh, there are a few out there by water meter size. You know. So so we'd be looking to do something different than the norm, what's what's already been done out there with other cities. It's it's usually a pretty blunt instrument.
But no input from the League of Oregon Cities, as far as you're aware?
I don't reach out to the league regarding that specifically. I know there's some nuance, like for, if it was a transportation based fee uh, with like trip trip counts and things like that. But as far as a general city operations fee, you know, I'm not aware of any differentiation.
I own a business in unincorporated savings, right? I think it's in the county. Would this apply to my business?
Uh, no, it's only within the city of Illinois.
Okay, let's do it. No, I'm good. Actually, my second part of my question is this. I was looking at this map on the agenda and realizing last Saturday night, I was on a ride along with Marion County. A drunk driver crashed across, alleged, crashed across the street from my home. And Marion County was there. We called it in. Um, Marion County Fire and Police came. And I'm to find out my home is in the city of Salem. The church across the street is in the county, but the road is owned by Salem. So we were waiting for Salem P D to come to deal with that. Overnight, I'm thinking, what the heck? This is just a mess out here. I look at this map and I see all of these unincorporated areas. And I'm like, talk about a missing revenue opportunity. And how do we, I mean, it might be big. I see smiles. You have some inside information? Okay, it's just a big question for me. What are we doing? Can we find more revenue from another place?
So I I don't know of anything recent, and maybe those with more tenure could speak to it. But prior analysis has shown that the cost to provide service to those areas would be greater than the revenue received. If we were to annex them into the city.
And annexation is not something that we can simply do there. Yeah.
Well, it happened to us some time ago and we weren't aware that we could have bought that, so to speak. So it just.
The law changed a few years ago. And so soon as you show the annexations are much more virtually impossible. First, the initiated annexation, it really has to almost be We could talk about it at the time, but it's just annexing those properties. Probably isn't an option. That's a really good question. I mean, they have the same issue we do. Paying property taxes don't cover the cost of service. So if you expand the area, it really doesn't help.
Yeah, just one other thing in regards to business licensing. We license multifamily loans and land bullets here. So it's not, you know, this huge stretch or leap of faith, if you will, for us to have some sort of business license. And this would be a good way of establishing the data that we need in order to administer a program. All of the things that council member Norde spoke about as far as connection and and assistance with our fire department and understanding what's actually going on inside the building. So that when they show up, they don't discover a paint booth where they thought they had a pizza parlor, which happens sometimes. So that may be something that we want to think about. That's a very interesting. And I guess the last thing I would say on this, wh- what I've seen us do really well and and council member Stapleton and I were talking about this earlier today is that when we have a problem and we identify a group of people to work on it and kind of steer that problem. This may be one of those issues where Mary may want to appoint a group of people to work on this and come up with some proposals uh, over the course of the next few months, year, to to get us to where we need to go on this.
Also, perhaps, basically, city manager, Keith Selly, thank you for those comments. Yeah, I think you've answered my question, but my my question was going to be on the the registration fee for businesses. What are the advantages besides just getting the data for the operations fee? And I think you touched on the fact that it helps out fire and it helps out city communication in multiple ways. Are there any others besides those things you've already highlighted?
Even just for us, a simple knowing who the current owner of businesses is very important. Two o'clock in the morning when a person's been broken into and we have officers out there trying to contact the owner, we have no way to track that person down. So just having that data is extremely valuable, I think, all departments.
And and just to follow up, it seems like it's going to become more valuable over time, especially as the media landscape is not what it once was. There aren't, you know, well, I have the local newspapers that everybody relies on. So as a city, being able to communicate with the people that live and work here seems very important. So I think that we should very much continue to look at this idea of a nominal fee or registration for businesses so that we can enhance our communication and, you know, community resiliency.
Yeah, I know Whitburn had a, has a registration fee. Once it hit a hundred, we had a lot of people not comply. Hundred dollars is way too much for some of you. You know, so just, I don't know what the enforcement knew, but I know at some point they were struggling to see even collect that information, get them to register. And, yeah, and then it just, they didn't. Bring a new set of problems. And maybe not pay brick value as we try to gather information, which might not come. I'm thinking of the coworking spaces. I'm thinking of all these places that they're just registering their name, their L L C. Is that a business or is that not? My office is about four L L Cs. It's nonprofit working out of there. So it's just. Be a lot of extra work.
Hey, my my follow up question, what I've heard the C C F is somewhere between twenty five and fifty dollars. Is that the ballpark that other people had heard previously?
We could update that information. There's really two schools of thought. One is just cost neutral. It's really just to cover the administration, the program. You know, pretty nominal fee. The other one is a revenue generation piece. Yeah, that's something we presented several years ago. And at that time, the revenue task force didn't pick it up as one to really pursue. But as far as just a cost neutral, just cover the cost of administration, I'd be really, really nominal.
And I just, I I feel like closer to cost neutral, but you know, maybe anticipating the needed support staff to maintain it.
Maybe this is part of the, there's a relationship there between the payroll tax and the business license because ultimately, the the business owner has to administer and collect that payroll tax. So even though the employee is paying it, the business is still involved in it.
Yeah, I have seen, and we can talk about it now, but other people who administer payroll tax, they often collect other information, like the industry that the company is in, so that could solve that issue also. If you collect that information with payroll tax, when it's administered.
So I'm just saying that if you Google this, there is a model business license ordinance that the League of Orange Cities published in twenty eighteen. So it could be a good starting point for members of council, just to take a look if it is something that we want to do. Uh, it talks about, you know, typical exemptions, you know, like, uh, you know, Little Johnny's lemonade stand is exempt from this, the business registration fee, for example. But they also talk about, you know, how how you would structure that fee. And the smaller the business, the smaller the fee is basically what it would be. Under their model, one to ten employees would be a fifty dollar annual license fee. Eleven to fifty employees would be a one hundred dollar annual license fee. Fifty one or more employees would be two hundred dollars. Those are just suggestions performed by the League of Oregon Cities. And I'm not suggesting that we necessarily impose whatever they recommend, but it does give us a starting point based on what what outside sources are recommending. So our possibilities.
Uh, so I have three slides that show the cell table. And I'll point out what's going to be different about them. It's going to be the navigation center and the shelter site grant program. Those two lines are going to be different, but everything else is going to be the same.
I'm sorry, the navigation center on the left?
The navigation center fund right here and then the shelter. The navigation center fund right here and then the shelter site grant program. So.
And those are our micro.
This what's throwing me off. What's the shelter site grant?
Oh, so we, let me show them as grants right now for the shelter site to Church at the Park.
Okay.
They're currently funded with one-time federal, now depleted state revenue. Uh, so under this option A, uh, it wouldn't provide any funding for shelter sites. Micro shelter, yes. We currently have three prelocations. Uh, and then the the navigations are funding, uh, and this provides some funding for it, but it would rely on community partners who really make up that difference. Uh, to fund the operations. So those two pieces are gonna be different for each of them, but the other ones are gonna be the same. So starting at the top, uh, community policing. Uh, adding two million dollars new services. Uh, and then also funding seven million dollars of baseline policing. So this would be taking seven million dollars of the police department general fund budget. And funding it with this new payroll payroll tax. Um, so it would reduce the deficit by seven million dollars for that baseline policing.
And what is the two million dollars in community policing money get us?
That's a step towards uh a more relationship-based policing model, the policing model we've been talking about since the audit was done in twenty twenty. Our staffing analysis followed up after that to show some bright needs. Um, so the idea here, that would be twelve to thirteen FTEs, I'm guesstimating there. So we're envisioning the creation of of a couple of community policing teams. And if I had those teams with me right now today. Where those resources would be needed most and directed would be downtown court at northeast Salem, because that's what we're seeing increased issues, especially around crime and violence. And so those teams would be removed from the emergency calls for service and patrol, and they'd be free for that, so they could be problem solving. And interact with community groups and neighbor associations and business owners to try to solve problems in those areas. So that's how we're envisioning those teams. So it would kind of be modeled after what we used to have downtown with the downtown enforcement team, where you had five, six officers on bikes with the sergeant. We still have that team in some fashion, but it's been so diluted that it's spread out doing different functions across the city. So this would provide two dedicated teams like that. To step us towards a community policing model. Um, and from the planning and thought that we've done up to this point. Eventually, the vision would be to build that even further. We have six policing districts in Salem, so to have a team like that in one in each of our six districts would be. Be the perfect ideal. Um, so this would just be a step in that direction.
Uh, the next line.
Um, chief, how much, how many FTE is the seven? I mean, could you? How many FTE are we hoping to get from the seven?
So typically, I use hundred fifty thousand dollars for for office, I'd estimate, so. But that's just status quo. Yeah, that just, that just keeps us where we are today.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to to know.
The city manager has something on that, too.
Since Trevor has the floor, why don't you also speak to us about expanding the homeless outreach team?
Yes, this year, so with the operations fee that we talked about already, would be the seven day week coverage just for the cleanup portion of that team, SOS team. This would have the sworn peace officers uh for to cover that seven day a week also. They're attached to that team. Uh, they don't just work with SOS team all the time, but they do highly support them, especially with the safety environment. So this allows for seven day week of coverage of type of work that those two officers are doing right now. A lot of outreach and engagement, connecting folks with services and making sure everyone involved is safe. The service providers, the uh unsheltered individuals ourselves in some of these environments, they're kind of dangerous. And the SOS team that's doing the work. So it's really a safety component attached to the SOS team. Uh, that would be three or, you know, looking at about three or four officers there, but that does allow us to spread it out seven days a week. Right now, it's only five days a week.
And could you, would Chief Central, could you address the airport safety and security? I think that's you, too.
Five hundred thousand is uh. So, you know, we estimate we need at least one full-time police officer to cover airport. Based on whatever the schedule's gonna be with commercial flights, we'd have to work that out still. Um, I think we'd still have to supplement that one FTE with with other resources to provide provide the coverage as we need. But that's at a minimum, we're gonna need one new police officer to cover that service at the airport.
You know, I I have seen this slide before and I was hoping that I'd see FTEs attached to it by now. It's really helpful to Council Stapleton's point for me to see what are we getting for those additional funds and not just for. Policing, but fire and so on. So as we're discussing these numbers, whoever's discussing the number, if you can at least give me a ballpark FTE. That'd be great. But in the future, I would really love to see these slides with the FTEs added. It really helps crystallize in my mind. How many more boots on the ground it needs. And I think it'll be really helpful for members of the public, because I intend on sharing this information. With my neighborhoods and my constituent groups. So I definitely want to reiterate, please include the FTEs in the future.
I agree. That's, I think, and on some of the previous slides. We had FTEs on some lines and we didn't have them on other lines, even though they're FTEs included. I think it's just really helpful. Uh, absolutely. So we can, so we can understand. What, uh, you know, what the potential im- impact of our any decision we might make would be. And it's really is, you know, these are um. Really good general ideas, but they don't really help paint the picture. I mean, the the fire station, you know, that's pretty, you know, I get that. That's a, but it would not, it's kind of big. And just for this slide, just for that context, I think. For police between the community policing and the post team, we're looking at about sixteen FTE. Uh, between those two dollar amounts.
Okay.
For the fire station, we're looking at twelve FTE to staff that fire station. Uh, and then support services, I believe that's about six FTE. But again, it's split between the operations fee and the payroll tax.
Jackson, it would be helpful, I think, if you could just update these and then send them out to us.
We'll add a column with FTEs.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm I'm struggling with a question. Is that okay if I struggle here? Okay. Sorry, chief, this one's for you. So. So. What I see right now with our police are. Folks who are on twelve hour shifts, who are stretched to their max, who. Keep losing, losing folks uh to retirement or to other agencies and an inability for us to backfill that. So. I guess my question, separate from the seven million, I I get that that kind of keeps us where we're at. But does that keep our officers in the state that they are in now? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I've had to take uh, you know, numerous efficiency measures just in the two and a half years since I've been here. Uh, you know, and I've told the story so many times, but just to step back a little bit, it's been a little bit by death, like death by a thousand cuts over the past ten to twelve years. You don't really realize it's happening because you're not keeping pace with population growth. So thankfully, the council did add uh the positions to our budget plan. This just is last year. Right? But before that, it's been at least ten years without any additional staff. While the city grew. Uh, challenges around unsheltered population, homeless, all these things were changing in our environment. The police farm was not growing. What we did to keep pace was cut services. So we had community policing teams and we had a public relations unit that had five officers and a sergeant. It doesn't exist anymore. There's all these little things that went away over the years that people didn't necessarily feel right away, but they've been happening so that we can tread water. And so we reached a point now where it's truly, you know, baseline services. There's a few more small cuts we could make that the community would feel. But we're, we're at a point where there really is no more. We can't solve this through cuts anymore. It's been too long. It has to be growth. So you're correct, and that is just covering current costs, baseline services. The community's not gonna feel any improvement or changes. We're still gonna have to implement those same efficiency measures that we've been struggling with. We cut detectives already and put more detectives on detectives on patrol. Which affects our ability to investigate poverty crimes. We lost our school resource officers. Immediately absorbed those into patrol, emergency staffing. They didn't really increase any, any benefit to the community as far as response. We went to twelve hour shifts this year. We're in the middle of testing out twelve hour shifts. Officers used to be on ten hour shifts. It's much more efficient on paper to work twelve hour shifts. It's about a twenty-three percent increase in efficiency. But what we're finding is it's horrible on work-life balance. If anybody wants to work in patrol car for twelve hours. And then likely get held over for another hour or two at the end because they're so busy. It's miserable to do that four days in a row. And I start to worry about officer safety and decision-making at that point. So we're testing that out this year. I'm not saying we're gonna stay there. Because I think what we're learning is it's a real challenge with work-life balance and we're kind of running people out of the ground. But that was one of the efficiency measures. That I thought was important for us to make. It was recommended in the staffing analysis. So that we could make sure that we squeezed every last drop of blood out of this turnip, right, before we ask for additional services. And and that's where we are. I think we're at a point now, I've been here long enough to realize where we can't cut anymore. Uh, we're jeopardy of low, damaging our ability to respond to emergency calls. Could happen with more things like detectives are investigating crimes for our community. So long, long answer there, but. Yes, the seven million does nothing to improve where we are.
Chief, what I think she was asking was, what would it take to not to 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 not be in that condition?
Uh, and I would fall back on, you know, it's not just me, the the, I did come in from the outside, so to speak, right? I I spent twenty-eight years on a California agency before coming here. So I bring that outside perspective as far as assessing the organization, but it wasn't just. Me, we have some data analysis done, too. So we got the community policing audit done that made a lot of fine, uh, great recommendations for improvements. As far as how we relate with the community. We're working, we took all those incorporated into a strategic plan and we're working hard to implement all those recommendations. But the report came with this giant asterisk at the bottom of it, said. You can't accomplish this without with the staff you have. Like, it was all these recommendations, but it said you don't have enough staff to do it. So I wanted to understand that better. So then we commissioned an independent staffing analysis right after that. They did an in-depth workload analysis of the amount of calls and workload each officer's handling. And the, we can go into this in depth and it's available online, but generally speaking, in the end, they recommended just for patrol. We have three divisions within the department, just for patrol operations, an increase of anywhere from twenty-seven to eighty-three more police officers. That range is based on how much community policing you want, basically, right? Um, so just even at a minimum, the recommendation was twenty-seven more officers. We internally assessed that with the vision we have of community policing, we think we need sixty to implement a really good community policing model. So it's it's somewhere in that range, right? What what services the community want. Uh, but we're at a point where. We need to add, at least to keep pace with growth of our city, just to maintain current services. I would say would take sixty, mayor, to your question, to get us to the point where I'm comfortable to be able to implement the community policing recommendations from the audit. And provide better services to the community.
I don't see any increase on any of these proposals. So, I mean, I'm just seeing the baseline and we're looking at increasing revenue. Just to keep the baseline. Are you going to show us anything that would increase?
What's the best I can give for chief's comments?
That's a little bit, you know, there's operational costs and overhead that comes with that, right? Um, it it's a really good question, and I think you'll find that same situation with every line item here. We saw it with SOS. We talked about with park rangers, code enforcement. Uh, there's, there's needs greater than what you see here. I mean, we've, we've presented, uh. You know, Courtney doesn't like the term, but deferred staffing analysis, uh, I mean, three hundred and seven positions. That includes. Uh, what the chief is looking for, both chiefs are looking for for fire, police. Um, yeah, that's, you know, forty to eighty million dollars depending on how much you want to address it. This is. This is nibbling around the edges, adding some services and covering the structural deficit. It really doesn't get to addressing that deferred need.
Sounds like I would rather than nibble to me, but I hear you. Yeah.
So just one other thing that this is predicated on is, it's predicated on fully staffing. Our existing positions, which is not what we're operating with right now and hasn't been what we're op- been operating with. For at least the last. Three years, we've been understaffed, so this is a push to get us up to full staffing, which is right now about twenty positions.
Yeah, so to be fair, when I started, we only had six vacancies in the police department. Today, we have twenty-one. So there's been a change in the environment, too. It's not just. Our police departments across the country. Uh, but we are, we have a plan in place to dig ourselves out of the hole, but it will take. A couple of years to get back up to where I think a five percent vacancy rate for an agency, our size is actually normal. Right? You know, you're always gonna have between five to ten vacancies when you have two hundred sworn employees. Um, but to have twenty-one, I think we're kind of behind the curve right now. It's gonna take some time to get out of it, but that does create salary savings, right, when you have vacancies. Uh, so of course, if we funded these positions, they wouldn't be filled immediately. Um, and there would be money there that's salary saving.
And I guess the other thing in regards to council, councillor Nishioka's question about. There, there are new services being proposed. The two million dollars is all new services. The community policing is. That's a new program for us. It's a new old program, but it's still a new program for us. Are not, we are not going to be able to solve a fifteen-year budget. Problem in one year. Uh, this is going to take time. Uh, it's gonna take patience, but. We have to start now, otherwise we are simply going to have to reduce our level of service. Down below what really is even sustainable or advisable.
Can I make one final quick comment, too? And I think Josh has said to cover this later, but. Kind of the beauty of an employee payroll tax is it has natural growth built into it, right? We've never had a sustainable model that actually keeps pace with population growth here. We'll find ourselves in the same problem ten years from now if we don't figure something else out. And so the employee payroll tax actually has some growth built into it, right? The economy, the economy grows. So hopefully you can add the staff along the way a little bit to keep pace with growth and not fall behind as badly.
So my back of the napkin or smart phone calculation is that two million of new services is about thirteen and a third of new FTEs. Not including support services. So my question is, is that subtracted from the ideal of sixty new FTEs?
And these are general figures, for instance. I do think that within the, within the city, we have about a one to five, one to four ratio for support staff. That's built in kind of the support services. But within the police department itself, we have about a one to five ratio for non-sworn employees. Like our community service officers who respond and field or police records, techs that process, process all the reports. There's a lot of support staff there, too. So we would want to build that in. Like you said, it's about thirteen employees. I don't think those would all be sworn necessarily. I think they would probably be ten to eleven sworn with a couple of support staff built in. Uh, but these are just general figures.
But that ten is a move towards the sixty that we need in the ideal. Okay?
So chief, can I just connect? I think the ideal, the recommended ratio is one to four. We are not there on that. We would like to be at that, at that.
Yeah, this is gonna, no matter what, it's gonna impact community support, you know, so as we talk about, you know, adding new funding for the police department and. You've provided um community policing for downtown and north, northeast Salem. Of course, the downtown will be impactful. I mean, that's what we hear about every day. Why those two areas? Is that, is that the hot spot? Is that where you think?
Even right now, that's kind of what I prefaced there. If I had those resources today, based on what's happening in the day, that's how I'd use those resources. I think it would be. Community policing teams that we could adjust throughout the city as needed. Um, and in a perfect role, I'd rather have a team for each district, right? But if not, we'd have to find a way to make some data-driven decisions about. Where those teams can be used best. If I have today, these would be the areas of highest need right now.
Uh, just one general comment before we go board. Uh, this is one recipe. Uh, we'll, we'll take your direction. I mean, uh, so what we're trying to balance is covering existing services, covering that structural deficit. Making sure there was some new service, but also looking at that rate. I mean, we'll go into that here in a minute. Um, you know, talking about, you know, what, what do we want to burden taxpayers with uh in the future? So that, there's a balance there. Yes, you could put lots of things on here, but it brings a cost to it.
So this is an example of what you can buy with a point four nine percent, so a little less than half percent payroll tax. These, this is an example. Of services we could get.
And I, I have a slide, if you want to go forward or we'll get to it here in a minute, that breaks that down for different income ranges, what the impact is. Uh, these next two slides, uh, a point five, six payroll tax and then a point six, six payroll tax. The difference is highlighted in the room. Uh, it almost funds the navigation center and it would fund uh one shelter site. So we would still rely on community partners to make up the difference for the navigation center. Uh, but it does get closer to that fully funding. And then option C fully funds navigation center. Our three shelter sites and it continues the current towing program that we're funding right now.
So when you say that it doesn't fully fund the uh navigation center and that you would ask for. Support outside of the city. Does that cost the city something to have that support or how do they? How does this, you know, like, how does Church of the Park, how would, how would Church of the Park be involved? I thought that. That was what we were paying for.
So the current, if I may just real quick, the current cost for navigation center is estimating about two point four million. Um, we're looking, hopefully that they're able to get some Medicaid reimbursement and some other things to bring the cost of that service down. So the two million dollar, two million dollars, it does have a little bit of risk. You might have to downsize the program slightly. If those other funding streams don't come to fruition, a two point four in this option C. You fully fund the navigation center, you, you might still have some savings if other revenue comes available. Um, but it assures that you have that two point four.
I was just wondering where that is coming from.
Well, I hope they're off to places.
I think, I think it is, that's a very, very good question, uh. But I, I don't think, it, it depends on what council's appetite and tolerance is for that number. Point four nine or point six six. Uh, at point four nine, we had very limited capacity without. Further eroding our police and fire response, which we think is, you know, job number one is. We've got a fire station in the bomb that's unfunded. We need to figure out how to fund that. That's not just going to happen. That's going to require additional revenue in order for that to happen, so. That was the first thing that we had to look at. And then the other thing was, you know, our support services. And then when we got done, we said, okay. About nine hundred thousand dollars left here, we can put that towards the navigation center. Uh, but they're going to have to figure out, you know, Church of the Park and Arches and the Community Action Council and others. Are going to have to figure out how to close that gap with us. Uh, and that may be reducing services, that may be closing services. Uh, that may be, you know, we're not in that business any longer, but that's just the reality of where we are. Uh, in our small group discussions, we talked about the need for crisis response, mobile crisis response and. Again, I'm not advocating that we get into that business independently, so you do not see a line item. For us establishing our own mobile crisis response, but what I would advocate for is that we. Support our peers and partners in Marion County and Polk County to expand their program. So in the, the point, is it point six six? Yeah, at the point six six level. You know, there's probably enough in there where we could add another three hundred thousand dollars to that. And help support Marion and Polk County in delivering their crisis response services, so.
Yeah, thank you for telling me that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to follow up on that. Um. Out of all these proposals, the one I'm most supportive of is the point six six, but I do have a couple of tweaks. That, um, that, that I have in mind, one we haven't gotten to yet. Um, but a- as you all know, I'm a huge supporter of mobile crisis unit funding. And I would like to see three hundred thousand added to the point six six option. If it makes a point six six, point one percent as, as a result, so be it. But to me, um, I know that the counties are trying to hire people. I know that they're trying to get that off the ground. And I know that our counties are geographically huge. And I don't want crisis teams to be caught in this position where they have to decide whether to respond to a mental health crisis in Gates or downtown Salem. I would like to, rural Marion County needs all the help they can get, but so does downtown Salem, so does northeast Salem, so do all these different parts of the city. Including our schools. We have a lot of crisis happening in our schools as well. So I think you would find a lot of support here locally. For this revenue measure, if we add. Three hundred thousand, which is practically a rounding error compared to some of these other numbers. To the point six six, that's the one that I would be most supportive of. To me. Map center, shelter sites, those to me are non-negotiable. Uh, to me, there, there's no such thing as public safety without addressing our neighbors who live on the street. It's a very dangerous place for them to live. That is a public safety emergency to be living on the street. Especially when we have extreme heat, extreme cold, all the things, plus the normal, uh, exposure to crime. Not to mention, they don't have a lock on their doors if they have a door at all. So anyway, that's, that's where I come down on this issue.
Hey, Doc Sir. So just to show the impact to employees, uh, who would be paying the payroll tax? Um, minimum wage right now is thirteen fifty there at the top, um, and then highlighted in gray is this current Salem median household income. Uh, then you can see the impact by month and annual impact for the point four nine, point five six and point six six.
That's really.
Thank you. So this is where the second amendment that I would have is in mind. I wanted to wait until Josh had an opportunity to present this slide. I'm not comfortable with minimum wage employees paying a payroll tax, even though it's the lowest amount on that list. You're living paycheck to paycheck if you are on minimum wage. Uh, the same is arguably true for anyone paying fif- getting paid fifteen dollars a month. I think to afford. Uh, an apartment here in Salem, I don't think it can be done on minimum wage. Maybe not even on fifteen. So I would love, and I've told Josh, I forecasted this for him. I would love to see what these numbers will look like recalibrated if we exempted minimum wage employees from this payroll tax.
I did throw together a slide to, to show that I could get to that in a little bit. Okay, that's, that's okay. Uh, just real quick, there's some details on the, on the payroll tax. You have the one page in front of you, but just to highlight a few things. It's isolated to work performance within the city limits and for yourself employed individuals. Uh, we collect, we receive data from the Oregon Department of Revenue. Uh, they're administering the state transit tax and they were able to limit, uh, the area to the Salem area. Approximately fifty three hundred businesses reported that state transit tax, uh, this last year. Uh, we, we would require employers with listed limits to report and remit payment quarterly. So it's not a monthly process, it's a quarterly process. Um, ideally, we're done all, be done all electronically. So it would be a direction from our paycheck. So, uh, our employers would be required to report and remit payment quarterly.
So you're receiving the money from the employer, yeah, maybe the employee's money.
Correct. It's consistent with other payroll taxes, just like by, you admitted.
Okay.
Quarterly.
Thank you.
Very standard.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was having a hard time hearing that. Can you tell me, practice, how this works? You get your paycheck at the end of the month, what happens?
Uh, so before you get your paycheck, the employer adds a line and deducts the payroll tax and they. Hold it in a separate account until it's due April, uh, then they, they remit it to the city. So they collect it monthly and pay us quarterly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, employees, before we work in and out of the city limits, can retract their work location or apportion their wages annually. Um, I did a lot of research looking at other payroll taxes in Oregon and other places. Uh, I think this is probably the most consistent way. Uh, it's not common here in Salem because we don't have transit taxes, but if you work up in Wilsonville, uh, Hillsborough, where you have Primet and, uh. And smart, I think that's the most new transit, it's very. It's very, uh, common to apportion your, your wages. Um, and it's consistent with how other payroll taxes are administered in Oregon. Uh, the Department of Revenue's been really generous with their time, talking through some of these. Ideas and concepts. Um, so we're trying to be consistent with how other taxes are administered. Uh, we're looking to administer it internally at first, and at some point we might look to the Department of Revenue to take it over, so we'd like it to be. As simple, uh, and as consistent as possible with other payroll taxes.
Uh, Josh, are we back to kind of council or back to explain, are there ways to offer or to have a different rate? Depending on your, if it can be a stair step rate or is there a way to, you know, is there an option?
Yes, it is definitely an option. Uh, there are going to be costs to it. Uh, so looking at the, uh. Uh, deduction, it, I'll just skip to the end here real quick. I added this, uh, earlier. Um, I'm estimating there's about point eight, uh, billion dollars worth of minimum wage, uh, wages in Salem. Uh, so just really quick, uh, Matt, if you were to remove that from the scenario. Um, you'd have to increase the, uh, the overall rate. Uh, to compensate for that lost revenue, because you're not taxing that, that employee anymore. Um, and I also, uh, recognize that it's more complex, it's going to take a lot of work with employers. Um, it's not just a city administration issue, it's also employer administration issue. They have to track. Um, their employee wages and if you have exempted or not exempt wages, it causes complications. Um, so adding a couple FD just to that complexity to make sure we're able to work with employers on the administration piece. So yes, you could have a tiered system, uh, the payroll tax that we looked at back in twenty nineteen, it had three tiers. Uh, so you had an exempt for minimum wage and then you had a up to fifteen dollars an hour rate and then you had another rate above that. Uh, you could definitely do that. It's, again, uh, there's going to be an impact to employers. As they're administering with the rates out to the city, but it's definitely, definitely an option.
Thank you.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, you, um, you said that it will be about a billion dollars cost to the city to, to do this. Um, but then if the Department of Revenue takes it over, do we have to pay them something to do it?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and, and it's really, um, you know, I go into it a little more detail in the one pager. But in conversation with them, it's really difficult for a state agency to say they can, can't or should even. Uh, administer a tax for someone else without some legislative bodies telling them to. Uh, so it would be a process to get them to do that. Uh, and then, you know, just like us, they have their own projects going on. Uh, and we wouldn't necessarily be the top priority, so. I was able to get them to say a year, but I think it would be at least three years before they could really administer the tax for us. And there would be a cost. I think it could be even more than a million dollars.
And so, uh, to the point and what was your goal in asking them to see if it would be less costly or less?
So there's an efficiency for employers. If the, the DOR administers it, they already report wages to the DOR. Uh, it creates simplicity for them. Uh, it'd be less work for the city, we wouldn't have to administer it. Uh, but their, their timeline is, is lengthy, uh, if they're even able to do it. And they would have to get, um, legislative approval in their budget to add positions to administer the tax boards.
And they are, or they are not currently doing it for another jurisdiction.
Uh, they are doing it for transit districts. Uh, the, the folks I talked to weren't there when those agreements were put into place. So they're not exactly sure where, where authority came from. Um, down in Eugene, they're administering their. Their payroll tax themselves. They have a tiered version. Uh, they also have an employer, employee and a self-employment tax.
And the million dollars that you're projecting, uh, for the city's costs, is that primarily software or staff and software? I'm just curious.
Five FTE plus a couple hundred thousand per software.
All right, thank you.
The majority is, is personnel.
Personnel, okay.
I guess my, my question would be, I mean, it would be nice if it was both simple and, um, you know, equitable. But I, I don't think we can have both simple and, and equitable. So, uh. Knowing that, I guess, when we look to interface with the community, communicate with our, you know, the potential voters or people who have to. Buy into this, I would be nice to know what people think, um, and to get their sense of. Is there a preferred way? Is there a clear answer? Or we just have to pick, you know? Um, it sounds like Eugene chose to go with the tiered system, even though it has more co- complexity and they chose to do it in-house. And it would be helpful to know, like, that perspective and what people think, not just us, but the community.
And just, just real quick, Eugene was given a similar timeline, so I'm not sure they as much chose. Uh, to administer it in-house, they were kind of forced into it because the DOR couldn't do it for them.
Okay.
Both through the timeline and the complexity.
Yeah, yeah, I think that if we, if we ultimately go forward with that, because we ought to be planning on doing it ourselves, at least initially. That's what I, I get the sense as well. And if we're to do it ourselves, I guess it just feels like we really should look at doing it in a tiered way so we can try to get more equity. But I'm still open to more conversation.
But then, of course, we're looking at having to increase the percentage.
Right.
Because of the equity.
Totally.
Um, just real quick, a few more things I want to cover. Uh, we did include an initial discount of twenty percent. On the data. Um, so basically what we did is we took the, the revenue that the state is currently collecting. Uh, ran it through our rates, uh, and then took off twenty percent, and that's really for capturing. Um, any, if there was confusion about boundaries initially, uh, in the area, it's also. Within that twenty percent, it could easily cover, uh, any remote workers that are in or out of the area within that twenty percent. Uh, as we, while we administer it, I, I expect, you know, we'll talk about timelines, but you know, it's a really aggressive timeline to. Implement the tax. So it's not that we're not going to collect it, uh, it's just, it might not be collected right away. And then, then again, the data is from the DOR, five point four six billion report weighted for fiscal twenty two. Uh, it doesn't include self-employment, their tax doesn't apply to self-employed workers, um, and I didn't increase the revenue assumption.
What about, uh, retirees, people on social security, uh, that sort of thing? They don't pay. Your own plans, so would they not be included?
Correct, yeah, they're not included. It's only on earned income.
Thank you, someone that's retired and gone back to work part-time, then they would be taxed.
Sure, but if they're just on social security is what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it would, it would fall under the category. Well, you want that somebody who, for instance, is, uh, and for, for disclosure, this includes me. Uh, who's just received a post-retirement, we do pay a tax on that.
Uh, no, we wouldn't call them that.
Yeah, stood up here and text them.
Yeah. It's not the payroll tax, okay. And that's one of the distinctions between a payroll tax and income tax. It's not based on annual net income. It's based on your wage at the time it's earned.
Okay, that's, okay.
So, you mentioned that in Eugene, they do some, uh, those that are self-employed. So there's a lot of businesses, self-employed. Um, are you also looking at potentially finding ways that that would be captured or? Because, you know, they're, they're doing it themselves.
Yeah, so, so the recommendation that you have before you includes a self-employment component. Uh, so for example, we'd have a employment pay payroll tax chapter, and we'd have a self-employment chapter, and that would be an annual return.
On an annual return. And then would the state do that?
Uh, not currently, that's not what we're planning on.
So when they would get a form from the city and have to fill that out.
They would have a city tax return, yeah, that's correct.
That would be, you need to prepare people for that.
If you look at the timeline and a couple of slides, there are six months just for, just for communication, after all the administrative rules and processes are. Are down a whole six months and I still, you know, that twenty percent discount for delinquency. Uh, you know, we're not going to capture everyone in the first year, probably not even the first several years.
Josh, I have a follow-up based on what our, what our mayor said. Why, and you and I have talked a little bit about this offline. Why are we looking at a payroll tax versus a straight-up income tax? Because when you think about it, we are taxing very different people. Depending on which revenue measure we pursue, but I think. You had mentioned to me, there are some real administrative challenges to pursuing. Income regardless of whether it's earned through employment or earned through PERS or earned through other means. Could you explain a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. On the last slide, I showed a number, fifty three hundred employers reported data in Salem. Um, so we'd be looking at working with those fifty three hundred employers, plus some probably. Uh, you know, we did an income tax, you work with individuals, right? So we'd be looking at everyone that works in Salem, it's a lot bigger number, you know, it could be a hundred thousand. People that you'd work with as opposed to individual employers. The administration looks a lot different for an income tax versus a, uh, payroll tax. Uh, also, just simplicity-wise, you're looking at the wage at the time it's being earned, you're not looking at deductions and credits and other. Implications, you're not looking at, you know, state taxes, federal taxes, uh, it's just, it's just very simple.
And would I take it, it would be a lot more expensive to administer an income tax simply because there would be so many more people, so many more accounts that you would be looking at? Is that fair to say?
I, it's fair to say, I couldn't hazard a guess of what the cost would be doing, that's true.
Okay, thank you.
And I think too that the employment tax is, or the, um, employment tax is. Based on many workers that come into the city, utilize public services. Uh, but don't pay any other taxes, so it's a way to capture their use of services. That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, it's absolutely correct. It's a, it's a diverse revenue. Yeah, it's absolutely correct, it's a, it's a diverse revenue because it's so different than what we do, what we do currently. It's also diverse because it's a different tax base, right? So it captures those who live here and work here, but it also captures, um, you know, the last, uh, two thousand nineteen or seventy thousand. People that commuted into Salem and worked here, I just saw twenty twenty was released, it was sixty-nine thousand. Um, you know, I, I'm assuming that the next one might be, look a little bit different with other remote workers. Uh, but it's still a significant number of commuters in Salem that would be subject to the tax.
Thank you.
Uh, this slide just outlines the deltaing programs. Um, and the different differences between the option A, B and C, I think we've covered that pretty end up, you know, what each, what each option entails. Uh, this is the, the timeline side, when would the new revenue be available, uh, the city operations we increase. Uh, if we get a general direction, um, from council, it'll be included in the proposed twenty twenty-four budget that you'll see here in a couple of weeks. Uh, it'd be adopted in the P schedule, uh, we'd send out communications to the utility customers. Uh, it's effective July first, it actually is on utility bills in August and we actually get the revenue the following month. It's kind of a three-month process once it's effective to actually get the revenue. Uh, the more complicated one is the payroll tax. Um, if it's referred to voters, it could be effective as early as January twenty twenty-five, and that is aggressive. It's an aggressive timeline to implement that tax. Uh, we'd, uh, between April and August, fin- finalize ordinance language. Um, and then council would have to refer to voters, include it in there, we'll talk about it in a little bit. Uh, communication, we're looking at possible focus groups, um, community surveys to really look at, you know, if this is the proposal. Uh, what does that look like? And then bringing those results back to you to see if you want to make any changes. Uh, and then the November twenty twenty-three general election. Uh, then if it's approved, we'd add the administrative staff right away, um, and begin RFP for the software program. And then really those first six months are really for programming, administrative rulemaking. And then the, the next six months would pivot to communication with employers and outreach, before it's effective in January. Uh, and then the first, the first quarterly reporting of payments would be due in April of twenty twenty-five.
Josh said something that's important, I think, and I'd love to get some feedback from council about. Going out to the community and the survey and focus groups and whether you think that would be valuable and something that we should forward with. That's not free, but we think it's valuable.
I think it would be valuable, I think that would be very helpful to help in progress where people are interested personally.
Those gears in motion.
And just on the, 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 Dan, I'm just the city attorney, but just on the timeline piece, uh, if we're going to refer to voters, there's deadlines. To submit that to the county and get it on the ballot, so August of twenty-three would be a hard date for us to actually refer. Correct, for November twenty-three election.
Anyway, I just have a pit in my stomach because I see us, I see the cost, you know, we had the bond and communicating and getting that and going through all this. So what happens if we do all this, put all the money into it, refer it to the voters and it fails, what do we do? We come back to the table and start talking about cuts?
Yeah. We continue this conversation.
Okay.
The, the reality of our situation is not going to change. Uh, it's, um, well, it would change pretty dramatically, actually, one way or the other, but. The need for revenue or the need for cuts is not going to change.
Right.
Going forward, so i- if we referred it to the voters and it failed, then we'd like to come back to this table and sit down and continue this conversation about what are we going to do?
With a very short timeline.
Yeah.
I would say the second worst thing is raising, getting your taxes raised, but the worst thing is paying them and they're not feeling that you're getting what you're paying. You know, so I think, um, some proposals are trying to take, address the public's opinion. You know, they're, the emails, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
City staff did a good job of trying to address some of these things that are just like hotline issues, even knowing that it's not.
Correct. Our intention here is to get us on the ladder so that, you know, as the chief said earlier. We've got a diversified ra- revenue portfolio that's going to grow at or above the, the pace of inflation. Um, and it's going to help us keep our head above water. It's not going to prevent, it's going to get us out of the water though, but it definitely is a step in our direction, so. Yes, I, I also worry about that same outcome.
So, basically back to Council Barney's question. Does this have to go to the voters? Or is, is the payroll tax something that council can vote on? And implement and educate, or is it something that goes to the voters?
It's not required to go to the voters, you don't have to refer it, it's just adopted.
If I understand correctly, Eugene chose to do it council-matically by a vote of council. But there was a five-year limitation in their resolution that basically said they were going to go out to voters at the end of that five-year period to validate that decision.
It was either five or seven, but yeah, they, they included in their organs, they adopted that they would take it to voters at a later date.
And so then if they had voted against it, then they would need to re- and figure out what they would do, but it was seven years later.
I think, I think they're, it must be five years because they're, they're fast approaching that.
Thank you, I just was curious.
Like the second time. Yeah, that would be helpful to understand that, um, because it sounds like it guarantees, like if the way that they did it, that, that would be. I would find it helpful to understand, like, what they did, just as a point of comparison.
Sure, we can, we can get their, uh, adopting ordinance and see what the language was there. Um, I suspect it's not irrevocable on their part, but, uh.
So, I mean, you don't have to do it that way. Right, so we could, I mean, not that I'm advocating for this, but we could, uh, just make this decision and not have the voters involved.
Correct.
Okay, as a council, the council has that. And I, I guess my follow-up question on that, if it's okay for the body, um, is like, what are the consequences of that in terms of? Could the community repeal that, like, uh, what is their redress if they strongly disagree?
So, um. Are you specific, there's a, a, a record in the process where the quarters been circulated petitions. Uh, they would have thirty days to get, I believe it's ten percent of the signatures, so the, uh, signature is equal to ten percent of the votes by the last day of our election, so it's around. I, I don't want to, I don't want to guess, but, uh, it's not, uh, it's not incredibly high now.
Probably around thirty-five hundred, percent of the general.
Yeah.
Mayoral, actually, if I recall correctly.
So regardless, we do need to get community buy-in, I mean, yeah, we've got to get a community buy-in. And, and getting an understanding of like, what that need is, is going to be helpful. I'm very much supportive of, you know, including focus groups or polling to get some sense so that we can get the best possible package in front of us and the community.
But I want to go back to Council Barney's question, like, because I have a little bit of a, a, a broader answer than that, you know, to give you. We could, yes, we could look at ways to cut and, and say, okay, voters don't want this, and then we just start to get services and began. Or we could do, we could also retool and ask and go out again. You could go out maybe for a lesser amount or maybe, you know, or, I mean, all, all the options would be on the table. You could retool it, redo it, um, and ask another time, you know, this happens oftentimes with, um, levies. That's an option, so it's not, it's not a forever no, it's just, okay, there's a note that. Now I'm maybe asking a different question and seeing what the, what that answer would be, the police building, the psychopolic facility was a prime example. There was a, and then they show them out, voters said no, they retooled it, made a smaller facility, uh, lowered the class and voters said yes. Now, those options would be available to us as well.
Just thank you.
I mean, just to say though, that given the timeline and our revenue needs, we might have to do a combination of things, cuts and ask again. Temporary cuts, something.
So, um, to, um, Counselor Gonzalez's point, the few neighborhood associations that I've been speaking to the revenue, um, needs about to them, um. Basically, they seem to be in favor, they're okay, but at the same time, they want to see results. They want to see that that money gave them the things that they're asking for. And it's really public safety and, um, and continuing housing homeless. You know, so I think that if we make sure that the package reflects that those things will be maintained and, and increased, then I feel that we'll probably have positive support. That, that's my feeling, you know, so far in the minimal, um, conversations I've had.
Thank you, yes, sir. Hey, and my thoughts along those lines are, I can't imagine, uh, sending something out that didn't include our homeless services. When it, when it's been for how many years in a row, the number one priority of residents in Salem.
Exactly.
What, that makes, that would make no sense to me to say, oh, yeah, we're going to ask you to pay a new tax and buy, buy the services that are the. They address your number one concern.
Right.
But just doesn't make any sense.
So that was all I was like, okay, we need to make sure that we're asking enough to cover those.
Yeah, and, and I think, yeah, I think it's important to remember that this is staff's recommendation to us, that we can accept it. Adjust it, we can do whatever, uh, the council says to do, something, yeah.
Uh, I guess, how, so, uh, I appreciate that this is staff's recommendation that we can modify moving forward. How will this get presented and, and, um, kind of improved or debated in the, the citizen budget committee process? These concepts.
Well, I think it's, so there's a couple of things where they go on. We're, they're going, they're trying to get a sense, we're starting to get a sense from us on where, uh, we, we have to do meaningful to one of these things. And if it sounds like we are, they're going to include the, include that in the budget. Now, that's going to, this is going to be the budget process, which will go along, but then council's going to have to take other actions to make all this stuff actually happen. The budget committee doesn't have the authority to implement any of these ideas. They only have the authority to improve the budget, okay? We need, council actually has to do the mechanics to make operations fee, referral to the voters. Any of those things actually happen, that's our work. I'm sorry.
Thank you, um, to both the chiefs, um, are your needs in terms of staffing based on population numbers alone? Or?
I, I would say, uh, so we haven't added really in staff since two thousand and ten, additional people to disagree to respond to calls. Uh, last year, five thousand three hundred people had emergency, critical emergency and did not get a five and a half minute response. So I'm, I'd like to say we don't cover the dirt, we don't have stations located close to where that population growth is. Uh, so we need to add additional stations and, and best case scenario, we need probably five more station locations. And to meet the national standard for response time, which is five minutes, ninety percent of the time, we need nine more stations. Which is the hundred and eleven firecutters that the mayor talked about in the state of Tennessee. So, we're, we're at forty-five as a number for us and we're talking about adding twelve. So it's just, just keep that in the perspective, this is a big ask for the community and we're adding twelve, I mean, that's going to help. But it's just like city management, it's the first step on the ladder, because over the last twelve years, we should have added five or six stations while we were growing. Because we're up almost sixty percent population, our car volume has gone up eighty-six percent. In the same time period, we're running thirty-one thousand calls last year and, um, so we can't get there from point A to point B fast enough. Because we're too far away in, uh, to cover the growing population. For example, station twelve, where station twelve is going to go out on Lancaster, uh, you know, Mill Creek. Um, when we did our two thousand and eighteen, um, analysis, that was recommended station to be added. Uh, we talked about going to bond in twenty twenty and that pandemic messed that all up, but anyway, we have the funding to build the station now. Back then, there was sixteen hundred calls a year in that area and it was eight and a half minute response time. It's still an eight and a half minute response time and now we're over two thousand calls, uh, in that same area because there's more apartments going up, there's more businesses. You know, Amazon went in, there's just all these things that's growing out there and we're not keeping up with, um. The, the demands, I guess, the service demands for the community and so that's, we're just, you know, add the station is great, I'm super excited about it. Uh, super excited that we have, you know, we're buying new fire trucks, um, but it's just the first step in a process to probably really have a master plan that says, you know, as we grow, we need to continue to add, and I'm sure it's the same for the police, if you add thirteen positions, that's not sixty. So, you know, where, where the next ones come in and what's the plan to keep growing that, that, that we're forced to keep up with your demands and your community.
And I think it's really important to remember, and if, if you looked at the staff report, that second attachment, we talked about comparable cities and what their, what situation they're in. This, all this whole conversation and that whole attachment is all because our tax system is broken in the state. The tax system that we don't control, that state legislature and the voters control. And it's broken, and it's broken for most values all over the place because we're funded by property taxes. The state government is funded by income taxes, and so for them, it's not as broken because it's, it's keeping pace. Whereas the property tax with these limitation measures, it, this is the result. And I think it's the result of the, the people who initiated those, it's exactly the result they wanted. They wanted less government and less cost and they wanted it capped and we got what we had support. And but it's now that we're, how many years later, a couple of decades later, it's, it's, it's just not working. And so we're cities all over and counties are left to do these little, you know. To fix a structure, a system with structural and broad, you don't have the authority to fix the block.
One more thing.
Yeah.
Follow-up from me for you guys. If we, I'm just, I'm just going to say it out loud, if we do a better job of dealing with our, say, our houseless neighbors who are suffering from maleness and drug addiction, will that lighten your load?
Yeah, I, I would say yes, I mean, it's, uh, I, I'm really hesitant to say that, you know, our, the majority of our call increases because of, because of those folks, it, it's part of it, but it's also population growth, it's also, um, you know, the aging population. You know, bond of interest building, retirement centers all over town, um, therefore people who need more services, so we go them, you know, four by ten today. Sometimes, so, yes, if, if, if we were, I don't, I don't know, solve the homeless problem is the right term to say. But if, if we reduced, um, that need in the community and there was, you know, if they were able to get to the navigation center or get into a, or the homeless, uh, shelters or whatever, and get, you know, get to supporting themselves and get out of the issue that they're in. Then certainly it would reduce, I mean, it reduces calls to nine-one-one, it reduces, uh, issues that, that we go out on that aren't true nine-one-one emergencies and, um, but there's, you know, it's, it's, we get called for it, so if somebody has to go. And that's, that certainly would be a reduction for us.
Yeah.
Can't say how much of a reduction it would be, but, um, you know, we, you know, we've had the downtown Marion Parquet, you know, with people starting fires in the stairwell and all those kind of issues, um, you know, we could be down, we could drive around that block all day long and, and, and deal with that because they're just there. So it, it would, it would reduce those kind of.
I was curious what Chief Womack's response would be to that question.
Yeah, and we have, you know, two different versions of public safety, right? And it inspires so much on response time versus medical calls and putting out fires quickly, there's a, there's a huge connection to response time, right? So that's why I think you get these national standards that are so much easier to fire, to have national standards, where police is different, right? Because it depends on which community you live in, you know, if you have a lot of murders and homicides and shootings or not, some communities have none of those things. So it really depends on what's happening around crime in your community, so it's, it's kind of different. So for us, we don't have like a national standard to, to point at, um, population growth is part of it, but it's also the type of crime. The bands that are on your police department in each city, but more towards that point of uncharted population, I do think so, yes. I think that, uh, several calls and emails that we've seen just this week, I think, as a group with downtown business owners. Uh, the folks that are smashing windows and are individual getting called in, which are crimes that are occurring. But there may, the, the offenders in those crimes are folks that are suffering deep addiction or behavioral issues, which is something that we don't control and can do very little about. But we're having to respond to that necessarily because it still is a crime that's occurring. So that would reduce our response to those type of situations.
Thank you.
I, I do also want to say that, and I can't let this moment go without saying, it's a lot, almost ten percent of our fire calls are to state facilities, state properties for which we receive zero income tax. We don't have a, I'm sorry, property tax, thank you, that's why we have it. We have to pay real land taxes, which is a common scheme with state capitals throughout the country, but one which we do not have here. Cherrywood's has it, they give them their little taxes. For some reason, state legislature has chosen to not give the city that, or the county or the school district. And that's so we, we, that is ten percent of the cost on state property, state facilities. I didn't introduce that in a short session in the state house and unfortunately it didn't get, it didn't get a party. And we've tried to run this time and we're still not getting traction. Um, but I'm, keep, keep fighting because it's, we, we have an extra burden. When I, I would, you probably have heard me say this, I said it, I, I said it on Wednesday, I said it in the city. As the state capital, we have an extra burden and we have, uh, what was it? Just two point one billion dollars, which is a real high value property, we don't, we don't, we don't collect property taxes. Two point one billion, it's about, it was, it's been a while, this is over the numbers, five million dollars out of the general bond, it was about six now, yes. About six million now, that we would have every year if those properties were in private. Now, we also do that in the limits for doing state capital, but I just wanna throw that out there. So, not, not advocating for this, not the history capital, just to be fair. They come with it. And the little infrastructure could hurt us to, to, to taxes to fund these political services. So about us a fire truck when they had the rings on the bedroom of the, of the Capitol building in nineteen seventy-seven. And thank you very much, that fire truck is no longer in service.
Anything you can do about that, seriously?
To your state representative and your senator and encourage them to support a annual vote taxes for the city itself, yes.
I had a related question.
Yeah.
So Counselor Hoy brought up some great questions about the kinds of demographics that you're seeing. Uh, and we, we heard a lot about the need for our police services. I wanna hear a little bit more about why we need so many more firefighters. And I was really curious, I, I know that this has become a Mecca for retirees. I'd, I'd like to hear a little bit more, what percentage of your calls would you say are serving our aging populations in Salem? I know aging population is a pretty vague term. But I'm just really curious, you say, uh, I'd like to hear a little bit more because that impacts all kinds of things, not least of which is revenue measures. We have a lot of people retiring here, they're not gonna be paying for a payroll tax anytime soon, but they are using our services. I'd like to hear more.
I don't have a specific answer for that, but we could certainly, uh, do a little data research and look at, at, uh, some of the reports to see the age of the patient that we respond to, um, for the, for the traumas, the, you know, the things that, you know, just people living life, car crashes and that stuff, it's all ages.
Of course.
Um, you know, some people say other people aren't good drivers, but we have plenty of young people that crash too, so, uh, it happens to everybody. But, um, I, I don't have a specific answer. I would, I would hazard a guess to say that, that I do know that my, my bond adventure example, you know, when they put the, the new bond adventure building out south, um, you know, lots of people lived in there, they're, they're elderly, they have more medical needs and so they use in their thirties maybe. And station nine, which is that's their local station, they go there four or five times a day. Um, so that's, we're in a busy station already and you add five more calls a day and they're out of service for thirty to forty-five minutes on each call, depending on what the patient's needs are. Um, so that, that is an impact and the more centers you add like that, it does, it does add up, uh, to your call line. Generally, I think it's just that almost sixteen percent population increase we've seen since two thousand and ten. So that's a pretty big jump. So we've had a steady influx of new, new residents of all ages, I guess. But I could, I could do a little digging and see, see if, if there's really a correlation there to, you know, what's, I haven't found the answer because it's been asked many times, what's causing your call line to go up? It's really its population.
But Chiefs, last time we had this conversation, you did give us a map, I think, with exactly, to touch on what I explained, with the calls at those properties, so.
Yeah, we have a heat map.
Yeah.
Those, uh, those care centers, so that includes, uh, you know, uh, houses that are taking care of, 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 you know, it's a business, but it's in a residential neighborhood. Those are higher call volume areas, um, depending on what type of patients they're caring for, um, they just have more needs. So I can, I can dig that heat map back up and just kind of gives you an idea of where, the sections of town that were, and it's usually around those care, residential care facilities that, that we're gonna be go to more often.
And the reason why I, I really want to know these things is that I'm picking up on what resonates when I talk to voters. When I talk of the bond, talking up the fire stations as a means to improve response ti- times resonated. And so understanding, a lot of people didn't, don't know that your, your crew, your teams are going to a bond adventure facility four to five times a day, nobody knows that.
Yeah.
But that helps me make the pitch to the voters, how many more FTEs will this mean? And does this mean that, you know, that nice old lady down the street is going to get that five minute response time consistent with national standards?
Right.
That's the kind of information that will help me make this case. Because that's what I used to do anyway, was I make the case.
Sure.
I advocate and I want to be able to advocate, so that kind of data will help me do that.
The adding to the twelve in that location could be, because we look at the data citywide. What's the impact citywide when we add that station? And, and the last numbers we pulled, and that was in twenty twenty, I think, adding station twelve at that location gives relief to station ten on State Street and station three on Lansing and station six at the airport, station nine on Battle Creek, because they're sharing that workload.
Right.
And it's about, I wanna say it was about four percent, if my memory is certainly correct, the increase overall citywide in the response type standard. Now, remember, we're at sixty point nine percent, we wanna be at eighty-five, that's our council adopted standard, national standard's ninety percent. So we're a long ways from hitting that eighty-five percent, but if we can make some gains, every station you add will help you gain a little bit of percentage on your response type. And that's a historical look back, so if our call line continues to increase, you keep staying below, you stay fine if you don't add fast enough to catch up. Does make a difference.
I want to, uh, call attention to the fact that we're getting on a, to, close to eight o'clock. Staff has asked us for, uh, some general direction. We're obviously not taking any votes tonight, but the ones who have not offered their thoughts, I think it would be, it would be helpful now if you were just still not bringing thoughts to get help staff as we go forward to start, uh, formulating these into something closer to some sort of proposal, now would be a good time to share those with the habits. Counselor, Bonnie?
Oh, thank you. Wow, um, this has been a lot of good information, um, you know, I, I feel like I bear a lot of responsibility to care of our residents or city. And these are really tough decisions and things to talk about, really, really hard, um. And I guess what I wanted to say, uh, you know, that a lot of people, they're not gonna notice these expenses. Um, I'm worried about the equity part of it a lot. Um, I worry about it for myself, it's gonna be really, really tough. Um. When I look at what it's gonna be, an additional year where I am on a fixed income and then supporting myself, um, this is gonna be really challenging, so this is a really tough decision. Uh, I guess what I, I am looking at, uh, I like the city operations fee plus the payroll tax, you know, working out all the kinks. I would like to see us not, um, assess anything to folks that are making under fifteen dollars an hour. Um, and I'm wondering, um, cause I saw in one of the charts that with the city operations fee for every dollar increase, it increases the revenue by point nine three million, so almost a million, right? So wouldn't that offset increasing, um, well, wouldn't that offset us implementing the payroll tax at over fifteen dollars an hour then? Cause wasn't that, was that point eight million or something? I'm just trying to remember. Um.
So, so we, uh, in, in the calculations, it counts on both, both pieces of, uh, of revenue to, to add the staffing and cover the existing services. So it, it would be challenging to increase the operations fee to cover that portion. Okay, we could look at that if you'd like.
Well, I'm just trying to think of a way to help folks that are in that minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour range.
Uh, one, one real quick point, uh, the operations fee is inherently more regressive, uh, just because it's a flat rate for every household. Sure, um, as opposed to the, the payroll tax, it's a, a rate based on your, your income. So adding more to the operations fee doesn't necessarily help with the, the equity piece of the payroll tax.
I know, I'm just trying to help out those, I mean, I'm already hit with both anyway, so it doesn't matter. So I don't have anything else to say, thank you.
Thanks, Comfort. Other thoughts?
Sure, yeah, I support them. So I'm in support of the, the city operations fee. I mean, I, I, we have to do this, like, I'm not comfortable with, with what happens if we don't do these things. So I, I think that staff has done a good job, um, I, I guess, are there, are there, is there a succinct question that you're looking for us to answer that we haven't yet discussed?
Well, I think we've got the feedback to see if we need to move forward.
Yeah.
Like we said, we will be doing some outreach to the community, both in focus groups and surveys, so we can come back to you before, obviously, before we finalize any of this, you're gonna have an opportunity to say yea and nay.
So, uh, thank you. Uh, in terms of the, the, uh, the fee and then the, the payroll tax, um, I think the fee is, is solid. Uh, the numbers look like they make sense to me and it balances the fact that it is, it affects everybody, it's a bit more regressive. And it, it gets us part of what we do, like, it doesn't get us the entire SOS team going seven days a week. It gets us the code enforcement part of it, but then you have to do, you know, the parts that are included in the, the payroll tax to get the sworn officers. Um, just as an example, they complement each other, it's, it's not really a à la carte as much. So I, I see that and I, I acknowledge it and I support it. I guess where I'm looking at this, I'm debating between like option B and option C, you know, broadly speaking. And I'm, I'm open to improvements along the way, as have been recommended by other counselors. I do wanna see more about like what Eugene did, not because they did it perfectly, but just so I understand like, you know, that someone else has invented a wheel, I'd like to see how theirs worked, uh, so we can learn from their mistakes and their successes. Uh, same, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, man, I think you said it very well, it, it seems weird if we don't highlight and emphasize where we're going to add and keep services to address our community members that are unsheltered. So that's why I, I feel very strongly it has to be at least option B, if not option C.
Thank you, Counselor. Other thoughts? Counselor Stapleton?
Hi, thank you, um, I echo a lot of what my other counselors have said, uh. I, I think there's no way that we can go to the voters without something on there for our unsheltered. Um, and to me to not continue what we're already doing, uh, the adding that we would be doing, uh, to our policing and fire, I feel like those two things would counsel each other out. If we lost some of our services for our unhoused, that creates another issue that we're gonna have to handle. And so I don't know, you know, if that's worth the, the trauma to, uh, the folks who are experiencing homelessness right now uh, and the trauma to our community as far as a, a swift change in direction as far as, um, how we are tackling the housing crisis. Um, so I, I would be more in favor of option C because it keeps, uh, going what we are already doing um, and gives some stability to those programs. Um, this problem is not going to go away overnight. Uh, I think you were talking about it, uh, today, Mayor, about how long it's taken us to get here and, and that will take us time to get out and, um. So I, I would like to see some stability to what we're already providing and, um, more support for our officers. I, uh, I am really concerned about the work-life balance and the stress that, um, is on our officers right now. Uh, and I would hate to have, um, something happen. Um, I, I wanna see them, uh, with more balance and more, uh, able to focus at work and, and, and be, uh, fully present and, uh, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but, so I, I really wanna find a way to support them, uh, because I think that in the end, we get better service. Um, and so I wanna make sure that our community is getting the best service they can get. Um, and I think I've said enough.
Thank you, Counselor. Other thoughts?
My only thought with all of this is we are in just such hard, I mean, such difficult economic times. I mean, I look around the room and a lot of you folks are on salary, I'm not. And so any of these, um, these are gonna be, not just, not just for me, um, I mean, we, we're financially sound, but for folks that aren't prepared, you know, what are these increases gonna do to them? You know, so I, I just have, I, I just have a hard, hard time with that.
I'm really curious to see what we find out in these group discussions, you know? I think as a city, I think the minimum we have to do, I mean, base is making sure everybody feels safe. I mean, it's just, it's the number one thing, I think, at the end of the day. And whatever safety means to them, I guess, it varies, but, uh, if people don't feel safe, then we're not doing it. Not doing it. You know, uh.
Have any other thoughts other than that? I mean, I'm really curious to see what people say and what the appetites. Let's check. Thank you, Counselor. Other thoughts? Counselor Michalka?
In the focus groups, I would like to see if, um, sketching of, are people wanting to come to a vote? Or are they comfortable with council making this decision? That would be something I would like to hear.
That's a good point. Certainly. In light, in light of that, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, I am curious, um, what Eugene's experience was, what the backlash was from that, if there was any. Um, and also, the other thing, oh, for Josh, more, I'm getting better at reading your artwork. You're a gifted man, more detailed is better, like, I think, as somebody was saying, how many people is this? You know, what is this like, make it, make sense to me, what I'm getting for my money.
Yeah, we'll, we'll adjust that and we'll get it to you in the next couple of days.
And, and Counselor, just a little bit to your point, but not, certainly, I don't know what Eugene's experience was. When we implemented the operations fee, I know we referred a payroll tax to the voters previously, no one's heard. Uh, we got a lot of feedback on the operations fee, none of it pleasant. Um, and we didn't get so much, uh, regarding, as I recall, uh, regarding the, uh, the, the thing that we were gonna ask voters to. Good, so there will be negative feedback, there will be all sorts of thoughts that people have if we do something without asking voters. And it will happen even if we do ask voters and it's passed. I mean, so just anticipate that, that that's, you know, nobody wants to pay more than anything, I mean, I, I don't, I, you know, but I have, you know, have, can balance out the, the benefit, but sometimes that's more of a challenge for folks. They only see the negative part, they don't see the benefit part, and they like to express that, so they're not like an official. So you can anticipate that for sure. I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave you thinking that we're not gonna have that kind of feedback, and we are. And, and likely more than once, once when it's on the ballot and then again when it's effective. And then every time there's an article about it, they. And every time it's really exposed, the press, or whatever, so, yeah, there were going lots of.
And every time we go to a neighborhood association.
Yes. Yes. So, any else, Josh? Uh, what are the highlights? So we're, we're wrapping up the proposed budget, like going to print here in the next couple of days. Um, so generally, we're okay with the operations fee increase and the things that are associated with it.
Yes.
Still up for discussion at the budget committee, but before we go to print, I have several people over there that are anxious about it.
What?
I, I can just say, I don't know what it reveals is, I, I'm completely increasing operations fee. I would still prefer to have more of a scaled, uh, model like we asked for before. I'm, that makes me a little uncomfortable, I'm not saying that that was, would be a deal breaker for me, but that's where I would like it to be. And I'm, it's frustrating that it's not there and I, I under, I hear all the reasons why it's not, it's not, I agree with you, you know, yeah, so it's, um, anyway, that's, that's for now. Any else? Thanks, already. We're done.